The good news is that in this last year, we've seen a lot of stabilizing as far as inflation goes in this industry. We're actually seeing in some cases the cost coming down a little bit, so.
So that ninety dollars, nine, costing me ninety dollars, that's where DQ is saying we're not going to let it go above this? Or that's their goal, or?
Yeah, based on all the numbers that they kind of look at and calculate on their end, it's like, we'll give you enough grant so to try and help you not have to go above that number. But I have some slides where I'm going to talk to you about some things that you can do as a council and with your city staff to kind of figure out where your rates actually would need to be at some point.
Okay, thank you. I won't hold you up.
Yeah, yeah. No, these are great questions. Slide nine.
They weren't on camera. Can I ask them again? I'm kidding.
No, I'm not starting over, sorry. So then, let's see, slide nine, just kind of starting about to talk about some of the things that are going to make you need to bring in additional revenue because of this project. So the operation and maintenance costs, they're going to be higher for this newer plant. You've got some new processes that you're going to be running that you don't currently do. For instance, you're going to be de-watering biosolids. You don't currently do that with mechanical equipment. You currently lay them out and it's not really efficient. It's not any fun for the operators to do. So that's going to cost some additional operation and maintenance. Temperature treatment is going to cost some additional operation and maintenance. So there's just some things that are going to raise costs. And so we estimated that that would be roughly sixty-five thousand more. But that, again, I'm going to talk about some, a little bit more about that on some of these later slides. And then your annual loan payments, the DEQ loan, your annual loan payment, based on all the numbers we've talked about so far. If you proceeded with the two million loan with them, it would be an eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollar annual payment. The USDA portion of it would be just over twenty-five thousand. Making a total annual loan payment of one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So we would need to bring in sufficient revenue so that you have money to make your payments every year. So then, the next slide, just talking a little bit about some of the other things that USDA wants to see you establish. Short-lived assets is something where they look at, okay, in the next five, ten, fifteen years, what are some things that you're probably going to have to have some funds set aside so that you can make sure that you can replace that motor when it goes out? Or so that you can replace some component in your wastewater system and keep it going without having to run back to DEQ and USDA and ask them for loan money or grant money or whatever. Now, this is obviously a lot easier to accomplish in larger communities. It can be pretty difficult for smaller communities to stay on top of this. For the most part, I don't think you guys have anything like this right now, other than you have been putting some money away into your LGIP, but you haven't been calling it a short-lived assets reserve. But basically, it's that, it's just a fund that you have money so that you can take care of those things as they come along. And we'll talk a little bit more about what's in that on the next slide. And then the other thing that USDA requires is that for at least their loan payment, DEQ doesn't require this, but USDA says you should have an extra ten percent set aside above the value of your loan payment to us. And so that would mean that you'd need to have about twenty-five hundred dollars set aside. And you don't need to accrue that every year. You can just upfront have twenty-five hundred dollars set aside, always just kind of have that extra amount. Don't spend it in your budget and it's there just in case. So, and I think that they, this is just some, you know, exercise that they let communities do to make sure that when it comes to the day to make your loan payment, you're not struggling to make that payment. All right, so the next slide, slide eleven is talking about the short-lived assets reserve. Again, this is like if you're able to set aside all these funds for these different things, fantastic. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to be the one to tell you that you are going to do this or not. This is your decision to do this. So the headworks equipment, screw press, these are all different components in your treatment plant that if you're able to set aside these funds every year and just kind of pool that money up, you'll have money to replace some of those key components in there. One of the things that I think was probably estimated a little high was the cooling equipment. That's a little bit of an unknown as to how long that's going to last because you're actually going to be one of the first ones to run a temperature cooling process in the state of Iowa. So it's not fun to be the pioneer, but you're one of the first ones to get the permit as well. They have that temperature requirement in it. Kendrick as well. Kendrick's on the same schedule as you as far as when they have to have that ready to go. And the last, last slide on this is just a reminder of that compliance schedule. You're supposed to have all of these improvements constructed and ready to go by 2029, which we are ahead of that, so that's great. And then by 2031, you have to be compliant with it, and if you're not, they'll start assessing fines. So that's the schedule that you're on as far as meeting that new temperature limit. And there's other limits as well, like total suspended solids and things like that, that this improved equipment in your plan is going to help you make sure that you don't violate those permit requirements.
Is that something that all cities are going to be, I think, right?
It's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't venture to say that all cities are going to have it right away because everyone's situation is different. Your problem, and you can see it right now, when you're next to the Potlatch River, you're next to a river with a lower amount of flow this time of year. And so a lot of it has to do with how much water is flowing through the river, how much of that, how much water is coming out of your plant and adding into that. You know, they've done a study on your portion of the river in particular and determined, I think it was in 2008, was when they decided, you know, we're going to have to impose some future temperature permit limits in Kendrick and Julietta because we don't want to kill off the aquatic life in the river because we're putting in warm water and killing off all the fish that are trying to live in the near portion of the river. And so the, it was set in stone years ago and it didn't actually get added to your permit until 2018. So 2018 was the first time you learned, okay, now we know when we have to have this ready to go and implement it into our plant. And so they kind of gave you about ten, eleven years to get this figured out, to do this, the planning, which you did with us, to do the design, which we're now done with, and construction, which we hope to start with soon. Did that answer, Kendrick answered, who asked that last question?
I saw.
Okay, all right. Let's go to the next slide. So slide twelve is just kind of a summary of where we heard yesterday when we were visiting with folks here. I think these numbers are right. Bonnie's going to look at them and tell me I got them wrong. But I believe your current sewer rate is just shy of forty-eight dollars for your base rate. Well, I guess that one wouldn't have an adder. And then your base water rate, I think, is about fifty-five dollars a month. And I think the thing that we heard yesterday was that lately, and I don't know if this is set in stone, but I think you've been actively raising your sewer rate somewhere around two dollars or so every six months or something like that. So I just kind of did a quick little calculation, just kind of just looked at, if we were to continue on that same trend through, say, October of 2027, your sewer rate would probably end up somewhere around that sixty to sixty-five dollar range. Just kind of depending on what you decide to do as a council. Okay, next slide. So just kind of looking at all these different things that we talked about that would require some additional revenue. If you just looked at these new components, not accounting for, like, you could already have your rates high enough that you're not spending everything that you're bringing in for revenue. And I think you're doing that strategically because you know that you're going to have some additional costs when this plant's done and when you have a loan to pay back. And so depending on how much money you're able to accumulate, this may stave off how much longer you have until you need to bring your rates up a little higher. But anyhow, for the additional O and M, it would mean that you would probably have, need to reserve at least a twelve to eighteen dollars per month portion of that rate for the additional O and M for your loan payments. If you combine those together, about thirty to thirty-one dollars per month of that is just to make your loan payments. And this is based off of two hundred and ninety-eight accounts, which is what I think you're at right now. If that number were to decrease, it would mean a little less burden for everybody. I know this community is not looking at massive growth or anything like that. But if it were to happen, it would help the situation some. A little bit helps a lot. And then short-lived assets reserve, if you were to fully establish that and move forward with that full dollar amount, that would be equivalent to about seventeen dollars per month. And so depending on some of the things I'm going to talk about on the next couple of slides, you know, if you were to have no, no money saved up by the time this project was done and you were just starting from scratch to try and pool together the amount of money that you need to make your annual loan payments, you would probably need to have a sewer rate beginning in, I think, 2026 to 2027, somewhere around that eighty dollars per month or so to kind of stay on top of this. That's not an exact number, and I'm going to talk about why. Because, you know, one of the main things is we kind of need to see how operation goes of your plant. And there's some other factors that I want you to keep in mind. Ninety-eight dollars, that end of the spectrum is like, we don't have any money in the bank. We're kind of starting from scratch. We have no LGIP money, nothing. And so, you know, we need to start saving right now so that when we have our first loan payment a year from now, you know, we've got the amount of money to do that. And I think I might say this on a later slide, but your first, and maybe I already said it, but your first loan payment would be about a year after construction ends. Yep, so that would be 2027, based on where we're at now. I've got a slide later on that gives you an abbreviated schedule for what that might look like if we were to go out to bid as soon as August or September of this year. So a couple of factors to consider, we talked about this a little bit yesterday with the city staff that could make it, but, and the mayor. But the actual operational cost is something that we would want to keep an eye on in that first year of operation. You know, how much energy use we had to use. We've done calculations on this, based on how much energy that equipment could use. But, you know, some of these things are even difficult to calculate. You really kind of need to get through that first year of operation, see how things are going. And you can make adjustments to your rate going forward if you're not bringing in enough to consistently stay on top of that operation and maintenance. How equipment is used in the first few years following construction? I mean, I guess I don't know, you know, if USDA and DEQ are going to say, well, you've got the temperature equipment in place, you got to start using it now, or if you're going to have the choice to say, well, we don't want to start doing it until we have to and our permit says we don't have to until 2029. So I don't know how that side of it works. I haven't asked anybody. I would think that they would say, well, you got the equipment there, you should probably start treating for temperature now. But again, that could be something that could fluctuate a little bit, depending on, you know, how you decide to go about doing that. How your operators are paid, they, I would assume that right now your operators are paid from the sewer utility, the water utility, and probably not from the general fund, but sometimes cities pay them some from the general fund because they're doing things that don't involve sewer and water, like parks maintenance and street maintenance and things like that.
We pay through streets, water, sewer, and then sanitation. So we can take the pressure off of water and sewer and not just focus on those.
Right.
So now it's all for, and the same with me and Wendy, but we are, streets, we're just water, sewer, sanitation in general. So, because we actually do a lot of the paperwork for all, everything, so.
Right. So there can be a balancing budget as far as that goes. You know, how, how much of the sewer utility budget is actually going towards paying your operators? And, you know, it just, it depends on how you manage that side of it as well. I would say that we were, we were on the conservative side estimating how much you would have to increase salaries for paying for operation and maintenance of the sewer utility. Because again, we don't know how you're going to manage the entirety of their salary and benefits. That's something that, you know, you guys have a whole handle on. So I just kind of wanted to bring that factor up as well. The next slide, slide fifteen. Other factors that could affect your potential sewer rates, paying down principal a little faster. You know, if that's something that you guys decided to do, obviously that would mean less interest overall. That would mean that you would pay off your loan earlier. And so that can definitely have an effect on how much your rates could need to be as well. This, early payoff of these loans is okay. There's nothing wrong with that. There's no penalty. And I see communities do it all the time. So again, that's, that just depends on how you want to manage that side of it. How existing savings, like your LGIP or anything else, you know, CDs, things that you have, money put away that maybe was intended for this utility, you know, if you wanted to use any of those savings to either pay down some of your principal or if you wanted to keep some of those in reserves so that you're kind of stating off how long you have until you maybe need to climb your rates up. Because again, those numbers we were talking about before are assuming that you don't have any of this. You don't have any LGIP money, you don't have any CDs, you don't have any savings, and you're not planning on putting any of that towards any of this.
Question, Stillman?
Yes, sir.
So some of this money we could use for some of these private OM, we could use that money for the operating costs we have to have or should have in savings, right?
As, as long as that's money that's meant for the sewer utility, then I don't see why you couldn't. I mean, the main goal of all these reserves and things that we talked about, that USDA kind of says you need to do this, they don't want you to run out of money. They don't want you to run in the red. They want you to run in the black and they want you to stay in the black. And of course, that's what you want as well. So, good question. That last bullet there is just what I mentioned earlier. Everything we talked about today is based off two hundred and ninety-eight sewer accounts. So if that number changes, then that, that can affect some of those. The next slide, slide sixteen. So we mentioned that first bullet, first loan payment wouldn't be due until about a year after construction. So what would that look like if we were able to proceed with bidding in the next month or two? So if we're able to start bidding in August, September, and then conclude that bidding in October, we would anticipate you'd be starting construction as soon as November. And construction is about a year and a half. There's some things that are longer lead items that are going to take probably about fourteen months to get. Your generator is going to be one of them. Some of the electrical gear and equipment takes about that long as well. And maybe some of the larger pieces of equipment that would come more towards the end of the project. And so some of those things are going to stretch that out a little longer than we would have liked. Pre-COVID, you probably could have got this project done in about a year. But we've also seen that post-COVID, some of these companies don't hold some of these pieces of equipment in stock anymore. They make it when you order it. And so, so that, we would anticipate construction would wrap up around May 2026 or so. So then about a year after that or so, you would have your first loan payment to DEQ and USDA. The last bullet, you know, you've got some time, you know, that's the other thing that I wanted to kind of show you. What we're talking about is not something you have to do today. You are already making decisions, responsible decisions, to increase your rate over time. And you've been doing that the last few years, and that's awesome. You know, that, that makes it less of a hit, even though it's, we're still talking big numbers here. But it makes it easier for folks to digest it when it is stair-squeaked over time. So slide seventeen is kind of talking about the options. So option A, the options that the council has to decide on. These are the three that I could think of, you know, maybe you've got another one that I didn't mention here. But option A would be, let's proceed with this current funding offer that DEQ and, and by the way, DEQ worked with USDA Rural Development on this funding package. And this is what DEQ is able to do, assuming USDA can't put in any other funds, and I'll talk a little bit about that here shortly. If you were to proceed with that and we got back with DEQ and said they're, they're ready to go, go ahead and draft up the agreement, they would go ahead and get started on that. They'd probably have that back to you sometime in the month of August. That would need to be reviewed and approved by the, by the council, signed by probably the mayor. And then they would give us permission to start bidding, which you already have us under contract to do. We're ready to do it as soon as the funding is ready to go and as soon as the funding agencies say you can go out to bid. So that, that would be option A. That would be that schedule that I shared with you on that prior slide. Option B would be, well, let's, let's wait a little bit because USDA did mention to me, after we got this offer from DEQ, they said, we think that we found another possible funding mechanism to get more grant money. And so the first question I asked is, will that grant money require Build America by America? And if you're familiar with that act, that is affecting all federal aid projects from a certain point forward. Your project, if we proceed with option A, is grandfathered in and doesn't have to comply with Build America by America. You do have to comply with American Iron and Steel requirements, but that's already factored in and budgeted into the project. Part of the problem with Build America by America is it's still pretty new for folks and we're only just getting into construction on some of the first projects that have to do this. And what we're seeing is that it's spiking prices about forty percent across the board for construction. Not to mention there's also additional costs on our end, so we would have to do an increase in our contract with you just to oversee all of that and make sure that they're being compliant with Build America by America. Because you'll be audited on that and you'll need to have somebody that's making sure that you're compliant with that act if you're using those federal dollars. So I'm not trying to scare you away from it because in the future, after this project, let's say you proceed with option A and then you do another project another twenty years from now. If nothing changes in that law and it's the same thing that it is today twenty years from now, your project's going to have to include it. So I just want you to know that if you, if you decide to sit around and wait for that, that could be something that's introduced to it. And the only way that I would suggest that you say yes to that is if somehow they're going to use enough grant money into this, that your loan portion is less. I don't know if that would be the case or not. I asked USDA what the timeline would be. They think that maybe in the next two to three weeks they might know. But I also said a lot of these same things a year ago. And so I don't know if they'll come back and say, well, it didn't really work out, or we don't know yet. So I don't know what the timeline would be to wait for that, other than what they've suggested to me as a possibility. So we might know in a few weeks and we might not. So that's option B, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. And then option C is do nothing. Let's just bag it all up. We've done what we've done so far. I don't, I don't know if there would be any other consequences with some of the funding we've used already if you were to do this option. But the other thing to consider on this is if you do nothing, you still have a permit that you have to comply with at your plant. Your operators still have a plant that is kind of being held together by duct tape. I mean, not, not literally, but I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's old, as you, as you know. And so it can be riskier and riskier every year to proceed with the plant you have. And the current plant that you have can't meet elements of your 2018 permit. And so once that compliance schedule says that you need to have things ready by, you'll start being assessed fines. And I've seen communities that did get into that situation where they were just racking up the fines and then they had to go back to EPA and negotiate the fines down. The only way that they can negotiate the fines down is by having a plan in place to make sure that they were going to upgrade their plant and do whatever steps it takes to meet that program. Yes, sir?
What are they going to do if we did that though? Like, what are they going to, going to just shut the town down, shut the water off?
Good question. I don't know.
But we ain't selling everyone's property?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I don't know that I've seen it go quite that far. The furthest I've seen it go is a hefty EPA fine. You know, I would think that, that you could be sued by the federal government.
And then what? That's what I mean. Like, what do they do? What's the ultimate consequence?
And put it to the man.
But I mean, what's the ultimate consequence?
Yeah, I don't know. Bankrupt them down?
And then what? You know what I mean?
All looking for a place to live in.
I, I just, I, I would think, I've seen, I've seen it on a smaller scale, like on a trailer home park, for instance. I've seen trailer parks that were in, and you've heard of some from the Moscow area, that had these kinds of issues. They couldn't meet the requirements they were supposed to. Ultimately, they were shut down.
So that's what I mean. Like, what do you do to a municipality? You just shut the town down?
I was told, Mark, they shut, they shut the water off, so you have no discharge.
So the whole town's just like, okay.
Back to eighteen eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could have shut it off.
Well, this is rural area though. If government comes in and shuts stuff off, we'll see what happens next.
Sure.
See what I mean?
Sure. So yeah, I, I guess I would just say I wouldn't recommend that course of action, but it's a good question. I have no idea. I haven't heard of anybody that's taken it to that extent before, so.
It might shut down anyway.
Yeah. Question worth asking though, right? So a little bit more on option two. I mentioned this. So BABA compliance, that's just acting for Build America by America. It would require also that we would have to update the plans and specs. What we had to do on another project that was, that ended up getting BABA requirements is we had to go through and make sure that everything that was being specified for equipment was going to meet the Build America by America Act. And in a lot of cases, we had to disqualify some manufacturers because we knew that they weren't going to be able to meet those requirements. And so we just have to go through and make sure that your plans and specs are set out that way. Right now, it's not. It's, we're geared towards American Iron and Steel project only. And then I already mentioned the third bullet. We've seen that it's increased construction costs only over about forty percent. And it would require additional, and I talked about that last bullet already. So that's, that's what I had to share with you today. And are there any remaining questions? So I guess I would just leave with, it's now up to the council to decide what they want to do, whether they make that, you make that decision today or if you make that decision in the future. You know, but whenever you decide to do that, DEQ is, is, you know, they'll, they'll be interested to hear what your response is and when you do. They'll, you know, if you decide to move forward, they'll move ahead with the paperwork. If you decide to wait, then they'll wait. I don't know how long this money will sit there though. That's something I didn't think to ask. But they did say that, you know, they, and I said this before, they busted their butts for you guys. I know that USDA has tried a lot to get a lot of different grant opportunities for you. They've come up short on a lot of them, and they're still trying as well. But nine point one million dollars is a really good funding package. I don't know that I've had a funding package of this scale with this much grant in it for a treatment plant improvement.
Or some town.
Ever. So anyhow, that's, that's what I had for you there.
You did great. Thank you.
Thanks, Stillman.
You're welcome.
Thanks. More.
Good idea.
So do we want to make a decision or do we want to wait and see?
I say don't, don't wait. When we wait, costs go up.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, it's inevitable.
You might as well, you know, I mean, with option one, where we're at, but if we wait for option two, we have to do that build, build America.
You don't want to do that, believe me.
Because we may get more funding, but all that's going to go for building.
The cost of it anyways, so.
You know, so.
So my problem, my problem is, again, I keep hearing these consequences. We have a federal government and a state that says, these are your regulations. This is the standard you have to meet. More and more, every year, no one can afford a house here. Most of our kids won't afford to live here. Who are we really building the sewer for then? This should have never happened in the first place, I don't think. I think more options should have been brought to the table. And frankly, I think these hard questions that I'm asking should have been asked to the state. What are you going to do about it? You're twisting our arms. In the post-COVID world, you're twisting our arms. You're threatening to shut the water off in our town. What are you going to step up? I know you'd step up if our name was, instead of Julietta, if it was JP Morgan Chase Bank, I know you'd step up. I know you'd step up if we were a private equity firm instead of a municipality. They'd step in right up because that's who they work for. Who are we building the sewer for at this point?
That's a really good question.
This money, I keep hearing the numbers go up. This money's going to be out of everybody's reach. Housing is already out of everybody's reach. We already have an oligarchy in this town. Who, who are we building the sewer for? Stillman, can you answer that please? Who are we building the sewer for at this point?
I mean, it depends on your perspective. You know, some folks will say that meeting the Clean Water Act is something that you're doing for yourselves as well. You're cleaning up your rivers, your streams, making them safer for folks to spend time and to fish in. And so again, I just, I don't want to sound like I'm, I'm on the environmental pedestal here, but you know, that's, that's kind of the intent and purpose behind everything that they put behind these requirements is to make it cleaner and safer.
Well, I'm happy that the Californians that are going to buy us out are going to have clean water. I'm happy for that. water, I'm happy for that. But we have priced people out of this community already. We have condemned our own kids, they'll never afford to live here.
Well, I mean, property values are not set by us, those are set by Leitoc County, so we have, I mean, we have controls over our rates, but we don't have controls over the property values, because that's a Leitoc County thing that the commissioners need to address, you know, that's something that we can't, uh, we can't do anything about property values, but we can't talk to commissioners to see what they can do about, you know, tax relief to make the prices go down, because I saw what some of these manufactured homes were worth versus what my stick-built home was worth with the shop, I was amazed at how, how high they jumped in their manufactured home.
Twelve-foot wide trailer homes are going for one ninety-nine.
Double wides are going over three hundred thousand.
And our wages don't keep up with that?
No.
Right, but I'm, I mean, I'm just saying that, the property value stuff is something that the commissioners need to address, so that's something that we need to talk to our commissioners about, we can't really do much about that. We can't do something about our rates, which I think with the, what we're trying to do with the budget, and maybe be able to pay this loan off sooner with Bonnie's plan, is definitely gonna help keep our rates lower.
Have we even agreed to be moving these funds that she, I think we should've been doing that long enough?
That's something that we can, are we talking about the budget during, right?
Right, yeah.
So, so our, our next bidding, August.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, Stillman, I feel like you did a good job answering questions. My questions aren't necessarily directed at you, but it really directed at the whole community.
No, it's a...
Who are we building this for? We're not building it for our kids, 'cause they ain't gonna afford to live here. I mean, we, at, at some point, and this isn't anyone in here's responsibility to think like this, but at some point, we have to start looking down the line, for those of us who are from here and wanna live here, who's gonna live here twenty years from now? You know? And I get what you're saying, Nick, like, they're, we're powerless as to where this property values and people who own property are benefiting, that's the way inflation works, but, who are we gonna spend all this money on? Are we condemning who's still left here by agreeing even at two and a, what, two and a half million dollars?
Yeah, I, I guess I would just say that, um, it's not going to get better, um, if you sit down and wait, it will just get more expensive, um, the requirements always get stricter, um, over time. Uh, for a lot of us, I, I don't know that we've had to live in the, the pre, the pre-clean water act too much, um, but if you go back not too far in our history, um, you know, toxic wastes, hazardous waste, um, sewage was going right into the river, and so, I think the intent and purpose of the Clean Water Act has been to regulate those things. Are they overreaching some? I would like to say so, but I don't get to make those decisions. Um, and the other thing I'll say is, is that it's not just happening to you, it's happening everywhere.
Sure.
And so, um, and I would also say that you're fortunate that because of the type of treatment plant you have now, you didn't get an ammonia limit like Kendrick did, because it would be even more expensive.
Well, I'll tell you this to my fellow councilmen, I've been in here for three years fighting for clean air. Okay, so if we're gonna go clean water, we need to go clean air, too.
Well, we're getting the brush bin that will help with that.
We are, and I, I'm very grateful to Nick for that, I give him a lot of credit for that. My point is, if we're gonna go down this path, we need to go down this path.
Well, and I wonder, so, by making it too expensive, we're condemning the town, but by not doing it, we're gonna get the town condemned, essentially.
Or we're gonna be fined at some point.
At some point, so, I mean, if we go this route, the only hope is that maybe wages will start to catch up, and, and people will be able to, just families will be able to stay here, move here, you know?
Versus moving out.
Versus moving out, I mean, so it's kind of a, which way do you wanna chance the town, you know?
And I would also say, because of how you have managed your budget to date, if you continue to make decisions like that to help kinda stair-step and bridge how long it takes to increase rates, um, it's much easier for your citizens to, you know, you're not telling them that your rates are all the way up here right now, you know, your, their story is, no, we've been responsible, we've been preparing for this, um, so you don't have to increase your rates all the way up to this amount till twenty thirty, or whatever that year might be. Um, so that's, that's the good news, and I, I feel, I feel like this, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not lying here, I've been in a lot of council meetings, I feel like this community has done a lot of things to be responsible and stay ahead of this that some have not, and so that's, that's something you should be committed to.
Well, ultimately, I agree with Nick that, you know, we're kind of a darn if we do, darn if we don't, we may as well have the clean water.
And less retreats.
Yeah, versus the less retreat.
We should commit ourselves not only to clean air, but also, we're gonna pin some pennies from that one here.
Well, and I, I think that with what we did on the budget, if we continue to do that, we're definitely going to...
That's great.
Yeah, we need to be more, I think that that should've started in March, actually, you know, I should've pushed harder, we all should've pushed harder, I know that you did push hard, but starting in March, when we have our first loan, we need to do that the way we did it.
Wow, now we know. And it worked great, it was smooth.
You did very well, by the way, for what it's worth, so, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I did, I, I did think that it went very smooth the way we went over it, and I think that it worked well for, for all of us, so...
I just think if we wait, I like to call it stalling, it's kinda like stalling, wait, now when the costs go up, the funding may disappear, 'cause when it comes to the, when it comes to the federal government, you know, they, they, they go with what, how the wind blows.
Is it possible to get more funding, even if we move forward today? Is it still a little...
It, it's, it's possible to get more from DQ, like I said earlier, if the, if the bids come in higher than estimated, um, you know, they, they don't wanna commit a certain dollar amount to that, they're hoping that it doesn't come in overbid, because they've got plenty of other communities with their hands out, but, uh, they did shift a lot of money towards you guys, and, you know, they, they wanna help you make this happen. But, you know, it's, it should also be noted that close to five million dollars, uh, the nine million dollars in grant that you got is from ARPA funding, um, I don't know if we're gonna get something else like ARPA funding in the next couple of years or not, um, it just depends on the, who's in the White House, uh, what the economy looks like, if they feel like, you know, they, they, well, not just the White House, but who's in, in the Capitol Building, you know, they, they're the ones that get to decide if we need to put in these vast amounts of, you know, recovery and, you know, healthy economy type, uh, grant funds.
We know that's the direction we're headed, it's not gonna get any lower, better, let's go this way.
Drill, leave, drill.
Drill, then you drill.
Yes.
Till we can't breathe, yeah.
Do you guys wanna, what do you wanna do?
Well, I, well, my thoughts are, I mean, I think we should move ahead, I, I do worry about, like, if we wait for the additional money, that we're gonna have to do the buyback, Buy America thing.
That's not a good thing, I know, instantly with that program's done.
And that could definitely cost us more with our rates potentially going up, you know, so that's where I'm kinda at, since it's really, you know, I think that we should just...
I think we should go with Plan A.
Buy the bullet kinda thing, 'cause we know that that's where we're at, like, we could go lower, and we could still potentially go lower if, if they give us a little more money, but we're not waiting on potentially a little more money that could cost us...
Like gambling.
More gambling, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not much of a gambler, I'm not much of a gambler.
I'm not gambling, I've never been.
I went to Vegas and never gambled a dime, so...
I lost a real, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's kinda my thoughts, but, I don't know, what are you thinking, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not happy, though, I'm not happy, though, I feel like if we're the guinea pigs, we should've got a free ride on the...
They should give us the chillers for free if we're the guinea pigs, right?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that, but...
Well, what the feds are gonna say is, you, you got all this, this money...
Well, that's how they do it.
Right.
That's how they get it.
That's exactly how they're gonna look at it, they're not gonna look at, you know, the loan side of your funding package, which, it looks great on paper as far as the percentage of funding, but two point seven five million is still, it's a huge loan for a community of this size.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, that's, I don't want anyone to feel like I'm taking that lightly, I 'm not.
Well, we know that you've been, you've been working hard for us.
Yeah, nine million dollars is still great.
Yeah, yeah, I know that you've been working hard for us, and we were surprised, I was surprised to see us get that much funding after you had said kinda what we were looking at, yeah. Does somebody wanna make a motion? That's the route we're gonna go?
I'm motioning, we go Plan A.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Stillman.
Not happy about it, I know. You got my cell phone numbers, I'll...
Thank you, Danny, be fine if you want.
You did, you're very good, thank you.
Thank you, Stillman.
Take care.
Thanks, Stillman.
Okay, so now we're on to the budget, I did kinda look through, and I don't know if anybody else, but I did have a couple of questions, and I just wanted to make sure...
Go ahead, please.
Uh, page three, on tree trimming?
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Because I thought I had in my notes, was it tree trimming, was that...
That was gonna go under something else, right?
No, I thought it was a different amount, I just wanted to make sure that I can...
I didn't bring my question about that, because I didn't.
Um, was that under public safety? Administration, public safety? Oh, ten eighty? Ten eighty-four fif- ten eighty-four fifteen is the number. Uh, we had it at two thousand, and then I had twenty-five hundred, so if we increase it to twenty-five hundred, it'll be, increase it to thirty-five hundred, or did we...
I probably put it in over twenty-five.
Yeah, I thought we were at twenty-five hundred.
Okay, yeah, so we wanna fix that to twenty-five hundred.
That's a good catch, good catch.
Okay, and then, uh...
Page?
Page five.
Okay.
Uh, did the bottom, uh, twenty-eighty-five-seven-thirty reservoir repair, fifty thousand? I couldn't find it on this one.
'Cause we had talked about it, Justin said, that they have to go in and they have to fix something in the reservoir, 'cause it's, it's, it's not just cleaning, we have a reservoir cleaning, but this is gonna be repaired, because there was something wrong with it, Justin?
Um, they did the inspection of the reservoir, and they did recommend some repair, but...
Okay, I just couldn't remember, and I didn't see it on, on this one, and I wanted to look, to see, 'cause I didn't have a...
That's why we had discussed it last time, deciding, and so we all decided, you know, fifty.
I like this, by the way, thank you, summer.
That, that'll go in the paper.
And then, didn't we discuss that if we didn't need that, we could, that was staying that, could we stay in that?
Right, right, it'll stay.
Or we could use that for that.
Right, because if we, if we have to repair it...
So it's not reopen the budget, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And we have to repair it, it's already in there.
It's already in there. See, this is a budget, it's just an idea of what you might be spending money on, like, if the repair happens, you know, it's like when I have to keep carrying over all those amounts for the wastewater improvement.
Right, I just, I didn't see it on this one.
Yeah.
And I, and I couldn't, I remember we talked about the well, and I thought we talked about the reservoir, so I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah.
We were, we're on page five at the bottom of the reservoir repair. Just make sure that we were good with that, 'cause like I said, I didn't, I didn't have any notes on here about it.
I think it was the day you could make it, we were talking about this.
Oh, was that it?
Yeah, it was.
In May, okay. Okay, and then, like I said, I was just going through and didn't see it on this one, but I wanted to ask.
No, that's a good catch, yeah. Is there another?
Um, I'm trying to think if there was another. Nope, I think those were all that I, I saw, yeah.
I have a question, I have a summary here, the part, where...
What page was it?
The, on the summary.
Oh.
It goes from twenty-three, we're at, we're at twenty-nine thousand nine hundred, to twenty-four, we're at twenty-two hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Oh, no, 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 that should be...
Oh, okay.
Twenty-nine eight hundred.
Oh, okay.
Good catch, I hadn't looked at that yet. That's, that's gonna make us a heck of a part.
What are they?
So, twenty-nine, not two hundred ninety-eight?
It's going down to a hundred.
Twenty-nine eight hundred instead of twenty-nine nine.
Okay.
So then, do you have to fix these before we pass the tentative, or can we put that in a motion?